Welcome to the board meeting of the Board of Education for School District 161, Monday, December 14th, 2015. Can you roll call Mrs. Brinum?
Okay, Simmons?
Here.
Odom?
Here.
Carroll?
Yes.
Marks? Horst? Huckabee?
Here.
Paredes?
Here and in court, Ms. President. Firstly, the agenda, we have, we are going to open the floor to a public truth and taxation hearing. The board will open the floor and take any questions regarding the levy from the public. The board will close the public hearing and the board may adopt the 2014 levy regarding the action item portion of the agenda.
Motion is seconded over to a public.
I will entertain the motion. Mrs. Huckabee first, Ms. Carroll second. Girl call Mrs. Brinum?
Okay, Carroll?
Here. Yes? Yes.
Other people?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Last time, actually, back in October, we did the whole levy presentation and nothing has changed in the actual levy. We did Postman newspaper. It was printed in the South Time on December 4th. It was in the sports section. It did put in a total levy of $26.3 million. It is showing a 15% increase and again, that's a lot of the tip rolling off. And make sure that we have money in the right place since we don't have an actual assessed valuation and so we don't... Here. It's not a perfect science yet until we have all the information, which after the now. And remember, the Cook County Court is going to pull you back to .8 on CPI plus the tip. Now, there's been a lot of questions coming about the tip and the myers. So what I wanted to do tonight is kind of make sure that everybody is on the same page with how this is all working, okay? So, for anyone who's not aware, the Flossmore tip is right here, it's just south of Valentine, where no more in Palmer, okay? Here, the construction for the myers is taking place. However, the tip encompasses more than just the myer properties, okay? It's a much, it's a larger group. The village actually owns the majority of the properties in the Tiff district, but there still are about three property owners who have held out and they're still trying to capture those properties, okay? But for the moment, that's the size of, that's the tip. Now, two things are happening. Tonight, the village of Flossmore is also doing their public hearing for the tax levy. They are putting on the increment of the tip and we'll talk about that in a couple minutes, which means that they do intend for this tip to be dissolved. However, as we speak, it is not. They're planning on taking that next Monday at the village board meeting on 21st is when they will actually do the resolution to dissolve the tip. But given that they are also levying for the increment, I don't think we have any reason to believe that they're going to not dissolve the tip that's going to happen, okay? But I don't want you thinking right now that it's been dissolved. It has not, it's supposed to take place next Monday night, okay? Okay. So that's next Monday night. Now, there is increment in this tip of about $3.5 million. When it was put on about 23 years ago, there was about $1 million worth of valuation on those properties. Now, there's about four and a half million dollars worth of valuation of those properties. So the difference is what we call that increment, $3.5 million. That's going to go onto your tax rolls as new property. What does that mean? Well, we're going to take the EAV, which is about $3.478 million, and we're going to multiply our rate, which is 6.22, and that's the amount of new taxes that you would expect to get from the tip rolling off, okay? So that's the first thing and that's what happens this year in 2015, right? That tip rolls off. Then there's phase two of what's going to go on. Phase two is the building of the myer. Now, remember, myer only is several properties on that tip. So the tip now goes away, that whole area just goes right back onto the tax rolls, it's normal property. Now, from that vacant land that the tip rolled off from, you put on a building, okay? Right now, the village is saying, they're reporting that myer has actually put an investment of about $13.1 million into the construction of myer. Look at that as market value, okay? Cook County then assesses all property, their commercial property at 25%. So that brings into a $3.275 million AVs, that's value on that new myer, what our anticipation is. Now, there's homework. At the myer superstores in Cook County and into some of Coller County's recent AVs, they're all falling between $3 million and $3.5 million. So I have no reason to believe that that's a bad number. It looks like it's about right. Come spot on, okay? After you get your assessed value of $3.275, you have to apply the equalizer. Using the 2014 equalizer, you've come up with an equalized assessed value of $8.9 million. Then, you take the rates of all of the taxing bodies that are, that were the myers six, which is actually Tax Code 32110 is the tax code where it is, and then all the taxing bodies associated with, for the myers, which we have left, put on our rate and we're looking at about another half a million dollars. Now, we won't put that on until next year after the myers complete, it's not on the rolls this year, but that's what we're looking at for next year. And in total, that's what myers are looking at with their bill. I've also done a little more research on how they handle their property. They appeal, but they appeal to the board review. We don't have any information that says that they go then to PTAX. As a matter of fact, they're already, seem to be content with whatever readings they get at the board review and they don't go to the PTAX because that's currently. Every myer that I look up, like Walling Meadows, the Evergreen Park one, the Orland Park one, Niles, they all sought relief at the board review, but I didn't go to PTAX. So I would expect that we would see the same thing, but the board review has been keeping them between $3 and $3.5 million. So that's about what we're looking at. Any questions?
Public comment? And roll call. Roll call.
Okay, other, the board will now take both comments. Yes?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, I think at the original presentation, the budget here, you had about $23.2 million for your levy. I'm trying to figure out how we get to 26 and what the anticipated actual levy will be, because I understand you're restricted by that, even though you have a 15% increase, what's your actual anticipated?
The actual anticipated is only going to be less than $1, so I don't know what it is right now. And the difference between the 23 and the 26 is, I gotta take a look at which numbers you're looking at, but it might be our bond interest because of the funds outside of cap. But in total, we're putting on 26, we're really anticipating only about 23.
And then, we still don't have any answer on state aid, right? Not until the budget?
The state aid has been coming in?
No, I know as far as anticipation for fiscal 15, 16.
No, right now, my, the best information that we have is the state runs out in about March, being able to make the government's state aid payments, and that's the best information that we have right now.
And we're still at that 69 number?
No, they're paying at 92% pro ration.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there any other comments from the public? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Truth of taxation hearing. Mrs. Huckabee first. Mrs. Odom second. Girl call Mrs. Brinum?
Okay, Odom?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Horst?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes, motion is passed. We are now, next thing on the agenda, we have audience comments. And there is no one signed up to make any comments, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is our Apple Distinguished Word presentation, Dr. Duster.
Thank you, Ms. Paredes. Shannon, if you'd like to come up. Helen, how are you?
Fine, great.
Good. If you want to come up and make a presentation.
Sure. You're ahead.
Yeah.
So, good evening. My name is Shannon Ashrock. I am a recent, new hired K-12 Development Executive with Apple and I'm exceptionally proud to be here tonight as a few months ago, I was just a colleague of many of you over in the nearby district. I have learned a lot, our districts have learned a lot from one another and it's really exciting to see you guys continue to grow and innovate and I am just very excited to present your Apple Distinguished Program Award tonight. So I, and my colleagues here as well, Helen Hoffenberg, colleague and mentor, who has helped me along the way, Helen Hoffenberg, Austin's K-12 Development Executive, and Patrick Beadle sends his regards, your county executive, who could not be here with us tonight. So, on behalf of Apple, we would like to honor and recognize Flossmore School District 161 as an Apple Distinguished Program. I'd like to read your recognition letter sent to by our vice president of education, I'm sorry, Mr. John Carriage. It is a pleasure to inform you that the personalized learning utilized, personalized learning using digital tools at Flossmore School District 161 has been selected as an Apple Distinguished Program for 2015, 2017, a two-year designation. Congratulations on being recognized as an exemplary learning environment for innovation, leadership, and educational excellence. Administration and faculty at Flossmore School District has shown that they demonstrate the five best practices of the Apple Distinguished Program. Visionary leadership, innovative teaching and learning, ongoing professional learning, compelling evidence of success, and a flexible learning environment. Apple has engaged with educators for over 30 years to explore and enhance the experience of teaching and learning. Our education mission is to provide a learning environment that supports the way students live and how they want to learn. We applaud programs such as this one that advance this mission, ensuring that all students are prepared for future success in work and in life. Sincerely yours, John Couch. And so a special thank you goes to Dr. Duster, Dr. Amy Wark, the principals of Flossmore School District 161, and of course, the Board of Education for all of your support and leadership in this. So without further ado, we have an Apple Distinguished Program banner. So you can hang proudly in your office.
Or will you choose?
Yes, outside the building, wherever. Dr. Duster, would you like to come up? Our author of our book? Dr. Wark? Good to see you. We'll have you two hold the banner. That's good. And especially give some new, our new clap this year.
It's really beautiful.
It's absolutely beautiful. This is a spot right across next to your chairs here. Yeah?
Just a brief comment, I've never met these people before. I've been on this jury since day one. So I worked closely with Amy, with Craig, and with the original plan, the journey has been amazing to see how far you've come and it's really a pleasure to work with Shannon. Not handoff, but you know, share, just share the, share the work. There's so much work to do. I just want to mention that the award covers five best practices that we've identified as exemplary. This is a very, it's a very prestigious distinction. It includes visionary leadership, student learning, professional learning, a flexible learning environment, and measure compelling evidence of success. So Amy worked tirelessly to provide evidence and a beautiful story. We're working on making it public so that it is published in our store so you're all be able to see it, and everyone in the community as well, and everyone in the world. So it's really my pleasure to just add a very brief comment and to assure you that you're in wonderful hands with Shannon, so.
The Board of Education could come up, we would love to get a group photo of all of you and your banner and your clap.
Principals, we'd like to get a picture of you as well.
You were bored that you were going to be photographed tonight, weren't you? A little slant, but you did pretty good. Congratulations once again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have the superintendent's report, Dr. Duster.
Thank you. Quite a few things before I get started, I want the Board of Education to know as well as the community, those people that are present, that we have treats over there for you for holiday greeting, so please help yourself. And we will go ahead and get started. First of all, we have enrollment dashboard. We're about two behind, two students less than we were last year at this time and everything has been staying stable. Any questions on that, please feel free to ask me. Second thing, we had a school nutrition program audit last week that took place during December 7th through December 10th. There, it went really well, we're waiting for information to come back. We have a couple edits. There's a few things with some of our bunch of waivers that were filled out by the parents where someone may have forgot the last number on the application, but there was really nothing serious, so it went well and I'll share that report with the board as soon as I get it. Next, we had a life safety compliance visit last week on December 9th. And same thing, it went well, there's a few minor items that they noted for us and we're going to get a report and we'll go ahead and take care of those, send that off, but it was a successive visit. Want to let the board know as well as that the district, the entire district will be closed on December 24th and December 25th. It'll also be closed on December 31st and Friday, January 1st. Next, our eighth grade girls' basketball, we have them state, they had a phenomenal season and we will be honoring them at our next board meeting, which will be in January, our regular board meeting. Next, we have our hiring of our director of special education in Heather Hill, principal. There's information in your packet as far as the tentative timeline. The postings have already been done for the principal and the director's position, so we'll start really looking at those when we get back from winter break and start that screening process. Administrative group interview, that the administrators interviewing, after that there'll be a stakeholder group interview, and then a superintendent interview, and then there'll be a recommendation to the board, it's our whole by March 14th. New principal will begin on July 1st. Special education director, that will take place, as you see up there, with the recommendation to the board on February 22nd. We're receiving plenty of candidates for the principal position, but the special ed position is not as many thus far. And next, what we will discuss will be park information. We received the park scores and we don't, we're taking the information, we're still analyzing it, but what has happened, we've broken down the information according to park, the state average, the district average, and the school average. So when you see the park average, that's what those schools who participated and out of all those states, that's where those percentages lie per grade level. The state average, self-explanatory there as well, the district average, you can see that. So our grade, our elementary's grade levels, the state average at least as a district, and they did well in park except for, there's a couple that are a little bit less. If you take a look at, I believe it was our state average for ELA at Serena Hills, that's one point underneath. We continue with this progress. Our sixth grade is a little bit, or is the same as park, it's 10 points ahead of our state average. And then our ELA, or excuse me, our MAP, that's a little bit below as far as that goes. Seventh grade, we fare well, and then eighth grade, our scores are lower than what the state as well as what park has stated. So we're looking through that and we're trying to determine exactly what all of this means. There's a lot of concern about a discussion taking place throughout the state and what we can tell you is that we're working diligently, the teachers are working hard with us, and we have systems in place and how we are working through the new part assessment and the Common Core standards, which are the Illinois Learning Standards. Are there any questions on this, or? Yes?
Hi, Helen, did the board offer any sort of guidance in terms of where these scores would fall into some sort of index score to figure out what would be one standard deviation or two standard deviations to the left and right?
Yeah, I'm going to show you a graph at the time here that they've given us, and this is really only information that we have along with what levels 1 through 5 mean.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions on this? All right, if you go to the next one, this is the information that we have so far, talks about the performance distribution by percentage, and you get the part of state district and then breaks it down into schools. And the more green you have, that seems to be better for us. But that, those are, that's the information that has been given to us so far and we're still analyzing them. And in your packet or in your board document, you'll have that for every grade level through group. All right, so that's that information. On Friday, we will send individual scores home to all of our families and there will be a letter attached to that explaining that information. Parents have questions, they can certainly contact the building principal, they can contact our office and we'll discuss that with them. Any questions?
Okay, next on the agenda, we have approval of several consent agenda items listed below. The executive minutes from November 30th have been requested by Mrs. Marks, they've been renewed from the consent agenda. We put it on separately. So with the removal of the November 30th, 2015 executive minutes, we have, again, minutes of the regular board of education meetings, November 9th, executive session meetings, November 9th, committee of the whole meeting, November 30th, and that is again the removal of the executive session meetings from November 30th. With that, we also have gifts from Hubert Stalling, Kai-Linda, Linda Chapter, 10 turkey baskets, $200, Western Evidence PTO, $1,000 donation to be used to purchase books, incentives, et cetera. And we have also included in that a FOIA request, two FOIA requests. I'll entertain a motion to accept consent agenda items as listed with the exception of November 30th, sorry, November 30th executive session.
My one.
Do I have a second? Second, Mrs. Odom.
Carroll?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Horst?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes, the motion is passed. I'll entertain a motion to accept the executive session minutes, November 30th. This is Marks, second, Mrs. Huckabee.
There are a couple errors on there, I thought you meant one correct. I don't, she's opening to present. And then, I don't know how to discuss content of the executive session. It's in the whole session, so I don't know how to handle that.
Okay, we can.
I just think there are a few questions.
That's why we can talk about that in the executive session. And then we can table that till after the executive session. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have community reports. I'm going to make the suggestion that we table the community reports from the tri-conference to the next committee's whole meeting in January and then we can have a fresh look at the end of the year, I think, at some illnesses and some other things that have, that I think may have distracted from this a little bit and I think would be more effective at that time. Does anyone have any objections to that? Sure. Well, I, I think it, well, okay, so, Mrs. Huckabee, you said this is Cora, Helen, Mrs. Odom.
Mrs. Carroll, come on, quick.
Mrs. Carroll did not go. Mrs. Carroll wasn't able to go.
Oh, well, maybe not. So four out of five to work on a time to time?
That's correct.
Yeah, we don't have a, is there material, is there something, and so what about this one?
In January. Any other objections? Okay. With that, we'll take that till January. Excuse me. Next on the agenda, we have approval of the bills. Bills this month were reviewed by Merle Huckabee.
Under the promotion of the board to accept the inclusion bills for $1,197,900, $1,000 in terms.
Second, Mrs. Odom. Mrs. Brinum? Oh, sure.
Carroll?
I'm sorry, I had a question. The bills included an item for three, for extra nights of hotel rooms and I was insured that was for the tri-conference. There were three extra, I believe it was $660 that said extra nights, so I didn't know if that was, if that profusely.
Extra nights. Mrs. LaBella, do you?
Well, like Ruth, I can imagine that she may have put it in as extra night as opposed to second night. What is your minutes?
Okay, so did anyone stay more than two nights?
So we paid for two nights for one, two, three, for four people?
That's correct.
So then we were rebased after this?
No, I only stayed one.
You stayed one, okay. All right, so two nights for, but then, Mrs. Carroll, did you have a hotel room? Okay, if you didn't. Okay, but you didn't, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I want to understand the other one. But we didn't use it and we rebated that, which I asked.
This is Breenham.
Okay, so I just want to know how the bills were handled for the hotel rooms. I thought we didn't, I didn't see a credit act.
Right, no, when we, when we go through I S B, there was a $200 non-negotiable, or non-refundable. When we, I guess, with June or July, we'll be getting a question. So the rule was canceled, however, we lost.
Oh, okay, so we don't get money? Okay. And then there was no rebate on attendance fees then? Should that have been in there as well?
I'm sorry?
The bills didn't include, I didn't realize, we should have been rebated back a conference fee, probably about $700 if one of us didn't attend. I don't know, is that, is that a sum cost as well?
You know, I just believe we made the deadline. I don't know.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, next, sorry. Next on the agenda, we have.
Another discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there any other discussion on this? Oh. Mrs. Breenham?
Carol?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Parais?
Yes. Motion is passed. Next in the agenda, we have approval of payroll. I will entertain a motion to approve payroll in the amount of $1,381,725.36 for the month of November.
I'm with a motion.
This is Odom's first.
Second.
Second is Mrs. Huckabee. Can we roll call Mrs. Breenham?
Okay, Forrest?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Parais?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next in the agenda is the approval of personnel report. Okay, there's been a, the last one changed, Quentin Crockett will be struck from the, from the personnel report. So aside from that edit, again, I'll call for a motion to approve the personnel report as presented, by the way it's presented?
I'm with a motion.
This is Odom?
Second.
This is Huckabee. This is Breenham, can we have a roll call?
Okay, Odom?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Parais?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next in the agenda, we have the approval of the district audit. I will call for, I will entertain a motion to approve the financial audit for the fiscal year, excuse me, ending June 30th, 2015, as presented by Legacy Professionals of L.A.
So.
Mrs. Huckabee?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Marks. Can we roll call Mrs. Breenham?
Okay. Marks?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Parais?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the district investment report. I will entertain a motion to accept the annual investment report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015, as presented.
So.
Mrs. Huckabee? You have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Horr? Can we roll call Mrs. Breenham?
Okay, Simmons?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Parais?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next in the agenda, we have the approval of the 2015 levy. I will entertain a motion to adopt the 2015 property tax levy and resolution authorizing reduction of certain fund levies for the 2015 levy year as presented. Do we have a motion? This is, Cora's first and Mrs. Carol is second. Please roll call.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Parais?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the 2016 life safety improvements. I will entertain a motion to authorize the preparation of contract documents for work delivered by Green Associates as presented.
So.
Mrs. Huckabee? Second, Mrs. Horr? Can we roll call Mrs. Breenham?
Carol?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Parais?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of summer school 2016. I will call for a motion to approve a summer school program for students in kindergarten through seventh grade in the area of school building for both language arts and math. In addition, the administration recommends that an enrichment program utilizing Odyssey be continued. Do we have a motion, Mrs. Harold? Do I have a second?
Second.
This is Odom. This is Breenham, can we roll call?
Okay. Marks?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Parais?
Yes. The motion is passed. Next on the agenda is the approval of the excess equipment. Entertain a motion to approve the removal of unused surplus and excess technology equipment in books that are no longer in use by the district.
So.
This is Odom's first.
Second.
Second is Mrs. Huckabee.
Question, question?
Sure.
There was a question or a recommendation or something with the name at the last meeting about the donation of those books or what people, or is that something that NJ just would consider having a book sale or something within the community utilizing those books? Was that taken any further?
Alur is one of the places that will take the books.
I'm sorry.
Alur, and that's a speed research shop, transition program.
Here, so it's in Chicago.
In Chicago, okay. And that's who we partner with for our families experiencing homelessness. And we give them donations. They also give us sponsors to support those families.
Any other further questions on this item? This is Breenham, can we roll call?
Okay, Simmons?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forrest?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Parais?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have a restriction of discretionary spending from Budget Function 2210. Call for a motion to direct the superintendent to cease dispersment of any discretionary funds from 2015 to 2016 Budget Function 2210 until further notice from the board. Do I have a motion?
So.
This is Odom? Second? This is Huckabee. Yeah, do we have, is there any comments or questions? Yes.
Is there something else we discussed further in the executive session?
What's the, what's Budget Function 2210?
This is LaBella, could you tell us what Budget Function 2210 is?
Budget Function 2210 is a version of a discussion.
Say it, I'm sorry?
It's a version of a discussion. Generally.
Which covers what?
Curriculum and instruction, generally. Professional development, Dr. Work's Office, and additional conferences and workshops, et cetera.
So professional development, continuing education, those kinds of things. And this was a $20,000 line item in the budget that the board previously approved with discretion by the superintendent on how to apply that?
I can only assume based on what's written there that that was the intention.
And what's the rationale for us to cease dispersment of this? My understanding is this is already underway?
This follows the discussion we had in executive session and certainly follows the discussion, brief discussion we had in open meetings that I personally don't feel that the proper procedures were met, criteria was met for the discretionary funds. And just speaking in general terms, I think that this should be converted to a proposal where from now on, if this money is to be spent, I think it should be written out and very clearly articulated exactly what it's to be spent for and what we hope to gain from that.
The framework that was provided is not sufficient?
No.
And the discussion that was held in the executive session would seem to be to continue on with this program is something that, did something change since that discussion there?
The, as I understood it, that discussion was in regards to money that was already spent. It was not, did you continue to spend money that has not been spent for this program?
I recognize that that discussion is completely different.
Okay. This is Odom?
I'm trying to get a historical perspective. The budget was approved by the board. And in the budget that we approved, it included the line item 2210.
That's correct.
Without any checks or balances at the time of approval.
No, the, wasn't 2210 of?
2210 is a function number.
Yeah, it is a consultant, it's a purchaser of the line, right? Yeah, so that, so that's a function number. And what was stated in regards to that is discretionary funds for our program which tied to the strategic plan as far as the community outreach. So the parent university and then we also had some professional development that took place under IU.
I think that you're getting, I'm getting off the direction that I'm going here to try to understand the history of this. There is a line item on the budget that says discretionary funds for the superintendent. Is that what you're saying?
The line item was designed for discretionary.
Is that what it says though?
It does not say discretionary.
What does it say? What is it titled? Contractual.
Contractual services.
Contractual services.
Yes.
And so in the contractual services, we read this, was there an understanding at the time that we approved it, what contractual services stood for?
Yeah, I believe we did. It was explained and it was stated that it would pay administrators, directors for teaching those classes that were to take place.
And so these are not separate contracts as the state contractual services?
No, it was also for.
This is to pay our employees that we already pay a salary to, to pay them additional money to do additional jobs outside of their salary?
That was information brought forth from the board. And also it was with contractors or when a consultant come in, for example. We had a woman, she was unable to attend, she had a family emergency. But that is next generation science standards to present to our community on that. She was someone that we also worked with as well. So it was a variance of administrators, directors, and in addition, consultants.
So we do a separate contract outside of their, our employees who we already pay a salary to? We do a separate contract for their services outside of what their job description is?
For that program, yes.
There is a contract?
There's no contract. That was part of the discretionary spending. That was brought forward at the Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Hi, actually, um, if you want to go back to the whole meeting, I just want to go back to that.
Obviously.
Just because, I'm only asking because I do have a call of very specific discussion about the exact detail that was a discretionary cover for you. So that's, I don't have any exact, I just hardly understand those details we provided. How about that, to let us ask, because we've discussed some more. We just want to ask you that is one of the things you just, you stated in there is that no more spending is to happen until the board is otherwise. We're going to have to discuss it some more in order to either direct or not direct, or what is the well-expected process? Is it, if there's lengthy stuff, the superintendent then gets a proposal and you just have to look at it and then we decide?
Yes, that is correct. And that's something that, anything regarding money is something that would be discussed in open session. Anything that is specific personnel, student discipline, things like that would be closed session. So at this point, this is all open session discussion.
So have, has any of the $20,000 discretionary been dispersed to date?
It's in line to be dispersed, yeah. For the work that's already been done.
Well, I'd like to, whenever it is, I guess we're going to discuss this, what, at the Committee of the Whole or when are we going to discuss it further? Mr. Harold made a request. Whenever we discuss it, I'd like to have the employees who are receiving this additional money outside of their regular job, their salary, to have their job descriptions and what they, what they're already contracted to do and how this extra pay that we're giving them differs from what their contract says, what they're supposed to provide to the district already.
Sure. What is the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, cut it.
All I was going to say is, am I not correct? The, excuse me, the works we, we can't go with schedule the last two?
No, we have one, this is the team member that had. I think we had two. There's no one who has. No one, no one's. That's it, yeah, so all the work's been done for this month already.
So the budget that you gave us before is going to reflect those two canceled sessions? There are one has been held, am I correct? Because it was one, well, that was at the library. So none of them have been counted. The two has been canceled.
Two that's been canceled, the rest have been held.
And there's some for January that are scheduled.
Right, there's some for January scheduled. Well, there's some for every month there is. That was the scope of work that I named down.
So is it the intention to? Has any money been dispersed?
It will be.
Has any money been dispersed?
It has not.
How much is scheduled to be dispersed? Or activities that have already taken place?
Probably about $55,000 or so.
And is it the intention by this motion that has been called to not disperse monies for sessions that are already being conducted?
No, it is strictly to hold features spending until there's actual paperwork and written footprints for exactly what we're spending this money on.
That's not how the motion rounds.
Um, hold on a second. Well. Give me a second. Oh, hang on here. Motion reads to direct superintendent to cease dispersment of any discretionary funds from the 2015, 2016 Budget Function 2210 until further notice from the board. That was under the understanding, okay, so perhaps that should be edited and should say minus funds that have already been spent for services already ready.
What hasn't been spent?
Well, okay, minus, how would we put that?
For services that have already taken place.
Okay, minus for services that have already taken place.
So do you have an amended budget that takes out those two charges from the one that you've already given us?
No.
Can you send that to us, showing us the difference between the sessions that we were going to pay them and the ones that didn't happen? Remedy dollars?
Yeah. Let's go forward.
So it's $55,000, is that what I heard?
I'm guessing on that. I don't know 100%, I have to look. It's right around there, maybe, maybe a little less.
Is that how many sessions? One. $55,000, one session?
There's been quite a few.
And the intention here with this motion, save for the dispersment issue, is to seize continuing education and professional development And the intention here with this motion, save for the dispersment issue, is to seize continuing education and professional development in a way that we conducted in the past, in a way the board understood when it approved this line item as a part of the budget? Because the board no longer wishes to give the superintendent discretion over this line item, contrary to the vote that's already taken place?
Well, actually, backing up to that committee as a whole where we discussed it prior to the, prior to the regular board meeting where the, where the, the budget was approved, I think that was 14th, October 14th?
September 14th.
September 14th, was it? Okay, so the, the August 31st has no record of any discussion taking place at all. And that, for me, is what the issue, there's no, if magically money is moved, we need to have a very clear idea of where it went. There is no record that that took place.
There's no video record?
No.
That's all that I have that I can look at.
Right.
Is that the one that showed them off?
That was the one that was damaged, where we don't have any record of that, it's not in the minutes. And my recollection of that was, as an aside, oh yeah, you know, we'll, we'll do this, but it's, there was no, like, real discussion about it. It was more of, oh, okay, you know, and of course, anything that, you know, I, I do well verify-
But we have to back it up because it was lost, the tape was lost or it's been, yeah, erased or damaged or whatever.
Is it your concern that, that no record exists of the discussion, or that the discussion didn't take place?
No, I actually have a couple of concerns, one that's, one of them is that there's no record. Another one is that the, there seems to be questions about the discussion. And, and I think that we need to establish that. And at this point, giving our, our last discussion on this and, and previous discussions, I think that we need to go back to just a simple proposal plan where if there's something that is of value that is identified, that superintendent feels that, yes, we should have this, and that it should be paid for out of this discretionary fund that was originally identified from the 20,000 dollars, then it should be a written proposal from here on out. That's what I think we should have, I think that is her, you share her responsibility, and I think that makes the most sense, just to be very clear about where that money's going, what it's being used for. And as a board, if we're approving this, I want it to be very clear. I don't think that's unreasonable, I think that's a more conservative approach to just saying, okay, well, go ahead, I'm sure everything will be fine. I think this is really the best solution.
So, the intent that, what you described is the exact opposite of discretionary. It's everything proposed for review and approval led for, rather than superintendent being allowed to conduct this program with full discretion or views?
I think that the superintendent should use his discretion in designing this program and moving it forward, I just think he should put forth some sort of written proposal about what he wants to spend the money for. So, if-
To be more specific?
To be more specific, so if we are going to call discretionary spending just one thing where it's entirely up to the superintendent, then no, I'm not for discretionary spending. If we are putting some sort of conditions on it by where we have some sort of record of some discussion and some sort of decision, then that's what I want. That's what I think we should do, as one of seven. You all can either support or not support, it's entirely up to each and every one of you, this is my position on this.
Mr. Lee, I have a question, when will that tape be completed?
I'm still working with the vendors, so we're hoping, hopefully soon, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
How did this item end up on the agenda?
I said, I would like this on the agenda.
So, this was solely your, your, this was your argument, this is solely your-
Ultimately, ultimately, this is my, this is on the agenda?
Not as much as present, but this is solely your feeling, no one-
Oh, I, I don't read minds, I have no idea what people think and feel, other than-
So, no one approached you?
Oh, other people approached me and said they're deeply concerned about this.
And when did that happen?
That happened in the last, I don't know, month?
Prior to our, prior discussion, because that was two weeks ago.
Was it two weeks ago?
Yes, and no one at that time shared your concern.
Pardon me?
No one at that time shared your concern.
When, no one at that time shared my concern?
Last time the board discussed this, no one shared this concern with you guys on the agenda.
I think that they were very concerned about that, but I think we're getting into-
No, I think this decision is not bringing up anything different than what we had in our executive session and we are going to continue to go about it down, and I just made the motion that we cease this conversation. If we have to go to a vote, we go to a vote. We'll give you a second, we can roll on, but we continue, we have this conversation, we're getting as a project, but things that need to be added, so.
Okay, a second motion.
Um, I would then make an amendment of my original motion, which is not to cease discretionary spending until further notice from the board, but for us to receive a proposal prior to, a written proposal of spending, a pro, a, a written report of proposed spending prior to any funds being dispersed.
Do you agree?
That we should have a written report setting out the proposed spending prior to any further dispersment from this discretionary fund.
From which?
Can I clarify that for the, all, I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're asking for, what would it look like? What would that specific proposal that you're asking for?
It would look like the report that he gave us last meeting that said parent university, Triscina-
Vote.
You know, I'm just saying, that's how it would look, since you wanted to know.
Okay, but then, how would that be different if it was already happened?
We don't have that, we actually don't get that prior to the spending.
We do have a written report, right, everything that's been done, and items that were pending.
No, first of all, that, okay, first of all, we're getting into executive session.
Can I finish my motion?
Okay, please.
Can I finish my motion? That is the proper order here.
Yes.
And when someone speaks out the order, that should be noted. The, my motion, if there's a amendment or a vote against my motion, that would be appropriate order. My motion is a stated. There is no section, second, or if there is a second, doesn't matter, but that's my motion as stated.
Okay, so could you repeat that, I'm talking, a written report of-
Proposed.
Proposed.
Spending.
Spending. Prior-
To dispersment.
To dispersment.
Tim, is that for future?
Yes.
Well, you're gonna give us, give me the other one anyway, but you don't have to, you're being, and speaking.
So, is that gonna negate what we said earlier about minus funds for services that are already taken place?
No, that's a separate.
To discount this two motion?
No, just one.
I'm sorry, did it?
Okay, so that would be, uh, call for motion of the superintendent to cease dispersment of any discretionary funds from the 2015, 2016 budget function 2210 until, until, or-
I had minus funds, that services have already taken place, and then you're gonna, we're gonna add the other piece?
Minus funds for services.
Looking for a written report?
Is that remarkably different from your proposed?
I, it's not remarkably different, I just think, there's little particularities that I think from discussion makes sense. So, let's read this one more time.
Right.
Let me read it down.
The motion that the president contemplated sought to cease dispersment from this point forward, when no funds have been dispersed yet, sessions have been held, work is being completed.
Where Ms. Odom is suggesting that for services that have already occurred, we pay that.
Right.
But prior to any fund, further dispersments or future dispersments, there is a proposal that outlines what the remaining school year looks like in terms of how those funds would be spent.
Right.
And just so that I'm clear, since you mentioned that the minutes do not mention this prior conversation and that there's no current, there is no videotape, which is really unfortunate because we have very different memories of the conversation that occurred. So, we are acting as if the conversation did not occur, and we are approaching this issue with, as if it's a new agenda, I think we got to.
That, when the tape was done, you know, it was a very specific conversation, it was a committee meeting.
I, I remember, I mean, I have my own recollection of the, of the conversation.
There's a lot of changes.
What do you mean changed?
Nothing, I'm just-
Ms. Dela, is it your understanding that any other budget line item requires a written proposal of spending akin to what is being contemplated here?
We're still, we're out of order.
Wait a minute.
We're in the middle of the motion. We're not, we're done.
There are several motions that have been offered, once and said.
And I am finishing the motion as restated, and we haven't had a call for a discussion on that motion.
Have you looked on your original motion?
Yes, I did, like, 15 minutes ago.
Okay. You ready? Okay. Um, I will call for a motion to require superintendent to prepare a written report detailing proposed spending prior to dispersment minus funds for services already performed to date.
A second, well, you call, you call. So, it's not a second?
Okay. Okay, so discussion question?
I have.
Okay, anyone else? Okay.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
First of all, there is no budget line item that says discretionary. So, you just made a motion to cease discretionary spending when there is no budget for that. The budget calls for different spending in 2210, 2210 is my understanding, is strictly for support services and development. It has to do with professional development, namely of teachers and instructional staff. And within that description, we utilize outside instructional staff and internal instructional staff, both with the Phlosmore Education Association and Phlosmore University. I'm trying to just figure out that we're, and I think being fiduciary is appropriate and making sure that money being spent appropriately. If you have a budget to support professional development, you don't have discretionary fund, you have funds that the superintendent, who's your CEO, directs. And you don't direct every single thing that the teachers get their professional development for. And I'm just trying to figure out, we're talking about some fiduciary things, and 30 minutes ago, I heard about some controversy related to the ISBO meeting, ISBA, about people staying, who didn't go to the meeting, and about people staying longer at the meeting, and I didn't hear any fiduciary concerns there. So, I'm just, I'm concerned that you're making a motion for a fund that doesn't exist. And secondly, you're, you're hogtailing the superintendent for providing professional development.
Because-
And I haven't heard anything from the Phlosmore EA that this development was a waste of time, or we don't want to do this anymore, or we shouldn't have parent universities. I'm just concerned that we're having a motion for a fund that doesn't exist, and then we're also saying, well, we can't have these things because of fiduciary issues and we don't question other fiduciary issues.
I understand your question.
So, I'm directing that to the president, so.
Well, any of us can answer the question.
I am, but I'm asking the president, so thank you very much.
Okay. The first thing is that the question, it is not just for what we're questioning, it's not just for teacher and staff development, professional development. The parent university is not for the teachers and staff.
And I said that.
And so, most of this spending right now is for those parent universities.
Okay. Of which I happen to be here for when we had these discussions to make sure we had those parent universities as part of getting the parents involved in the process of the education. And even in strategic plan, where I sat in on the discussions, that was a big part of making sure that parents were part of the educational experience and involved in that educational experience. And if it's part of the strategic plan, then it becomes incumbent upon the superintendent to carry out that strategic plan and include those parent universities.
Oh, so you're blocking the line item though, correct?
Yeah, it's support.
Not under the wrong line item.
No, but it's a support service.
Thank you.
Similarly, of being fiduciary with the board expenditures, for questions about fiduciary responsibility on board expenditures, I've been to previous board meetings where certain questions came up about attending meetings. Whether it was whether they should have attended, whether they should have discussed ahead of time, whether there were boards after someone attended.
And that's been voted on, correct?
Oh, that was previous, I'm just saying, those discussions have occurred.
So, that's all we're doing is voting on it now, thank you very much.
And I'm just discussing it, that's the right of the board, that's the right of the community.
And I said, thank you.
Well, certainly, Dr. Breck, I appreciate your comments and your questions. I've somehow missed your original question, would you like to restate that?
Well, there isn't a line item called superintendent's discretionary fund, so you're making a motion to restrict something that doesn't exist.
Well, I think that speaks to one of the issues that I've had with this, is that there, somehow this magically kind of appeared in, in a way that's not very clear. And so, this is an attempt to sort of back that up, so that we can have some sort of paper trail or written set of footprints by which we can get, we're gonna look at where this money came from and look where it ended up and see what it's used for. And, you know, by no means, the board is not saying, that's it, no more parent university. It's just the way that it is being addressed, I personally feel it needs to be addressed differently. And that needs to be addressed in a way, I think that Mrs. Odom has eloquently articulated in this motion, in this discussion, and that I personally hope that-
I just, and this is, I'm, I'm understanding my part, we have committee of the whole meeting, we'll engage the community to ask questions, this is a board meeting. And I am not disrespecting Dr. Breck's comments, I appreciate them, but when we're talking about the work that we're doing and things that we've discussed in executive session that we have information about, and bringing up points and we're allowing the discussion, that we don't allow others to engage in, what we've cut off conversations with others, I'm just, I'm understanding your purpose or criticism, it's a learning experience for me, about how we engage in a board meeting where things, motions are posed, voted on, when we report as a board meeting, and not committee, committee of the whole, how we're continuing this discussion. And including, and I understand what you've been told to consistently, is this is a meeting in the public, not of the public. And so, I'm really struggling with this, and it's not, it is not a disrespect to you, but I'm, I'm just, we handle one situation one way, I'm struggling with how we don't handle other situations where others have come with valid concerns or like, we vote and we don't engage in this much of a discussion. So, please help me understand how we continue this, when we made a motion, we need a second, we have four discussion, we take a vote, it's done.
Yeah, Mrs. Odom, you're exactly right, and I apologize, it, I was trying to give Dr. Breck his, his, answer his question, that was a good question. But I'm gonna suggest that we go back to our regular procedures, yes?
Actually, the audience is allowed to comment on any item on the agenda at that time, after the board has finished their discussion.
Okay.
Which is different from audience comments, which is comments or questions about any item not on the agenda.
I don't want people following that protocol, and I just, I thought there was another discussion going on for the board, so, and I appreciate that, so we've been having two years of seeing something very different. Like, every year, this is a, I'm probably the first time I've seen this amount of engagement with information that an audience member or a participant, community member may not have this information, so I appreciate that. What I'm trying to figure out is how we move through motions, get audience comments for their, but being very careful about their certain items that actually didn't go into the session. Things that we cannot discuss here about reasons why certain comments or conversations are happening, and I'm, maybe, maybe that's something I didn't understand. So, we can finish our discussion, anybody in the audience can talk and ask comments, ask questions or comments, whereas others, if they want, we can engage with the audience for as long as we need, is that correct? And admit people that want to say something after we've just done, continue to discuss it until it's gone out and then just, okay?
It's typically the discretion of President Wood, Dan Martino's comments or questions from- Typically, the discretion of President Odom, they maintain those comments or questions from the audience who want to see, or she has determined the board has finished with their discussions and questions.
Okay, any further comments or questions?
Yes, lots.
Is that...
No, I have lots of comments and questions, so if I'm gonna start, may I?
Yeah, sure, mother.
So were you in attendance at the meeting, the budget meeting, where we before voted on the budget that includes everything the district discussed?
You mean the October thirteenth one?
You mean all the discussions that we've had, budget presentations, in the public, the budget meetings?
Yes.
And then the meeting where we voted on the budget?
The meeting that voted, you voted on the budget?
We voted on the budget, yes.
I mean, I was actually down the street, um, at very feature conferences.
So you didn't vote on the budget?
No, I did not.
Did you share your questions with, about the budget with anyone, with the board to be asked, or prior to vote, prior to that meeting, at other budget?
Well, again, that goes back to the, uh...
Just a question, did you share?
Hold on, it's not a question, no question. That goes back to the August thirty-one, um, cow, where, um, we, we, there was a, an aside mention, but there was no actual, as I recall, there was no actual robust discussion about that.
Did you have the opportunity to thoroughly review the budget for the school district and vote on that budget?
The budget that I had to review did not reflect that addition, that was a change that came after, um, I was given the budget to review, so I would have had anything...
Were you saying that the budget that the board voted on and approved changed at some point?
Yes.
Without the knowledge of the seven board members that voted on that budget?
I can't tell you what, uh, the seven board, or the six board members who voted on that budget, uh, that evening saw, or the discussion, other than the videotape that I saw, for which there was no discussion, um, I can't tell you what other people had, all I can tell you is that the binder that I had, uh, from before the August thirty-first discussion, didn't have it in there, so there was nothing for me to go through and say, oh yeah, there it is, let's, we should discuss that.
Again, I ask you, did you have an opportunity to review the final budget that this district authorized?
Then I guess no. It is, hold on, so in terms of my understa, see, I think we're kind of going around and around on this.
Does this question, all spending is approved in the budget?
Yes, I got that.
That we are, that's where our spending comes from?
Right.
No one in this district can authorize funds that aren't allowed, and we vote every month on the bills that are paid monthly. Did you, what, what you're saying, I guess, is that at some point there's something in that budget that you didn't understand?
No.
And found to ask questions about, or that you just now don't like?
No, um, I think I made it very clear before that the, uh, the budget that I had did not reflect, the binder that I had did not reflect the final budget that was voted on at the October thirteenth meeting, for which I was not present because I was down the street.
So you were not provided, you alone, all the board members, and not provided the same copy?
I couldn't tell you, but I think that this conversation is coming down into the new show.
Can we get to this resolution?
You know what, I'm gonna make a call, motion to this discussion, and we'll go on to a vote.
Fine.
Mrs. Reno?
We both on this question, we just can't call it.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor, moving on, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Mrs. Reno, we have a roll call for the motion, uh, management requires superintendent to prepare a written report detailing proposed spending prior to dispersment minus funds for services already performed to date.
Okay, now?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Simmons?
No.
Marks?
No.
Varejao?
Yes, the motion has passed. Next on the agenda is executive session, um, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session, discuss matters relating to closed minutes, review, review of executive minutes, review of executive minutes recommended for release, and a review of executive minutes recommended to be kept confidential. Five, I L C S, one twenty slash two, C two one.
So, sorry.
Good roll call.
Um, they asked, I, I, unless it's on order, um, you know, um, Ms. Marks, like, asked about this, um, the executive session, these minutes, that we need to just be moved to act if we do not, because he's just gonna say it, he's gonna say it.
Right, that's something that would be...
So, uh, you just, I need to say that?
I don't think so, I think we could just, uh, bring that out in the...
Odom?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Yes, the motion has passed, we're going to take a session, and that's what we'll be here for somewhere about twenty minutes.